Good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of October 22, 2018. The time is 7:30. Welcome to Madison Heights. Can the clerk please take roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilwoman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please stand, if you're able, for an invocation to be led by Counselor Grafstein, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Under Reports, D1, receipt of the Special Counsel Recommendation Regarding a Tentative Contract, the tentative contract with the TPOAM of Madison Heights and the City of Madison Heights.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Yes?
I'll support.
Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to add to the agenda under Reports, under D1, a new item, a recommendation for the Special Labor Attorney, which would be entitled "The Tentative Agreement," or the TA, between the city and TPOAM. Department of Public Services Group. Is there any discussion on this item to add? All in favor to add signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, a motion carries. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, we have a presentation this evening. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's the Distinguished Budget Award for Fiscal Year 2018 and '19. Ms. Marsh, do you have a report?
Well, the city again was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the mayor has that award to present to the city tonight.
I think it'd be appropriate that, on behalf of the city council, if I present that to the acting city manager, Melissa Marsh, and thank her for your service.
Thank you. Very good. Speech, speech.
All right, there are no public hearings this evening, and so we can go to a meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address city council on any subject. So the meeting is open to the public. If you'd like to, please come to the center podium and speak into the microphone. It'd be helpful, but it's not required. If you could give your name and address and any affiliation, that would be helpful but not required. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name is Tom Smith. I live on East Calama. And I'll add my congratulations on the budget presentation reward, because I happen to be a retired local government accountant. Do you also submit for the CAFER?
No, not anymore.
Okay. Well, maybe you'll get there. But, good job on that. And it kind of leads me to my reason for being here tonight. A couple of weeks ago, there was an article in the local paper that discussed the results of an audit of Madison schools' business practices. Maybe you folks saw it, maybe you didn't. Because of my background, I'm also a CPA, that was of particular interest to me, so I contacted the state and asked them to send me a copy, which they did, and I'd like to share some comments with you. This is a cautionary tale. In my experience, this is how not to operate a local government. The central conclusion from that report, this report, and I can share it with you if you folks would be interested, is several questionable business practices were noted. Quote, "The most significant issues were with the MDPS circumvented, were that MDPS circumvented competitive bidding practices without fully transparency and authorization by the school board. To be clear, they did not determine conclusively inappropriate or illegal relationships." So I just want to make that clear. I can tell you, I worked for the city of Dearborn. We don't do any of these things, and I was pretty shocked to read it. They found all repairs classified as emergency repairs, competitive bidding did not always occur when required, lack of contracts with vendors, invoice splitting, monitoring the cost effectiveness of utilizing a construction manager, questionable use of petty cash, questionable payments made to related parties. As I said, I don't understand how that could even occur. What I'm here to ask, I guess, is whether the city of Madison Heights is engaging in any of these practices. I shouldn't have to ask this question, but this report has me interested as a city resident. I'm not making any accusations, but if any of the findings that are happening, of these findings in this report are happening in city government, this should be a wake-up call. Competitive bids and contracts should be done for all material buys of goods and services. Purchase orders should be issued for most items. Petty cash should rarely be used for any purchase. Even office supply should have a contract. These procedures serve all the parties involved, the taxpayers, administration, council, and the vendors. They are worth the effort, and they serve the public's trust. Good purchasing practices promote trust. I assume that the city has a purchasing ordinance and/or documented procedures, and for petty cash, too. Petty cash should be limited to incidental transactions. That's a quote from the report. In my experience, it's measured between $50 to a couple hundred dollars, not thousands. Again, purchasing procedures benefit everyone. They add value, they are not inconvenient, they promote accountability, and they keep you out of the newspaper. I don't want the city to face these kinds of issues. Please make sure you're engaging in the best practices for purchasing and finance. And that's all I have, and again, I can share the report or-
I'll accept the report, Mr. Smith.
Or email a copy of it to you, if you'd like also, but I have a spare.
Whatever is to your convenience, but I'll accept this. Yeah, we did study it, thank you.
Very good. I'm happy to hear that. Again, sorry to even ask the question, but I know what I'm expecting of the schools either.
It's, of course, we're, our job is to be open and transparent, so your question is very fair and very timely.
And I'm trying to actually help.
Well, I just want to assure you that the city of Madison Heights does have a very strong purchasing policy. It's also in our charter. We have had a clean audit opinion, I don't know of a time that we haven't, last year we didn't even have any adjusting journal entries. And our auditors will actually be here the last meeting of November to give a presentation to the public, so they do that on an annual basis. We always have a clean audit report, and we, our petty cash limit's only $50, and I scrutinize that even, so, yeah, we've never had any issues that I'm aware of.
And I'm really happy to hear that, and I, that's what I had hoped to hear you say. But again, you know, having seen this, it surprises me to see this from any unit. Their meeting comes up the beginning of next month. I'll be there for that one, too. So, thank you for your good effort, and I'm sure the taxpayers and all the stakeholders appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
We'll come back on the 27th of November and hear the auditors themselves.
I've sat in on one or two of them, maybe I'll show up for this one, too.
Thank you, sir. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone like to address city council on any subject? Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. As I introduced myself earlier, my name is Erin Lammers. I'm here on behalf of Danaskis Consulting and Development. We're based in Lake Orion, 169 West Clarkston Road, to be exact, and I'm here this evening to discuss the possibility of medical marijuana facilities in Madison Heights. Specifically, I'd like to speak a bit about the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, or the MMFLA, as it's commonly known. In its most basic form, the act allows a municipality to adopt an ordinance for medical marijuana facilities, which is principally a planning and zoning strategy. The primary objective, then, is to create an ordinance detailing the types of licenses permitted and where said facilities can operate. Our firm has nearly a decade of experience with planning and zoning, and with this expertise, we have collaborated with many municipal officials on several medical marijuana facility licensing model ordinances, many of which have been enacted throughout the state. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, from your perspective as the council, there are also several benefits a municipality can gain from opting in. With recreational coming up for a vote very soon, it makes sense for the city to consider opting in now and be in total control of crafting your own ordinance and beginning to think about marijuana potentially being in your municipality. As you know, you can write the ordinance exactly as you want it by placing limits on the number of facility types and enacting zoning buffers that make the most sense for your community and your local businesses. Also, the city can collect the traditional fees associated with the, with operating a business, and in addition, they may assess a fee of up to $5,000 annually per license. The state will also be collecting an excise tax of 3%, 25% of the total funds collected from this excise tax will be dispersed amongst the municipalities who have opted in. Based on the Michigan Senate fiscal analysis, they are anticipating this fund to collect $24 million in the first year alone, which is sizable. And lastly, I want to conclude with, I know it can be, as I said, very daunting to enter a space like this, bringing a new industry, especially a drug pharmaceutical-leaning industry into a municipality, but I want to make clear that likely marijuana already, you know, exists in your community in some form, and the best way to go about policing it is regulating it, obviously. So, you know, I know that you run your municipality very well, and so I would encourage just very strong regulation, and that's what the state is trying to bring with the Facilities Licensing Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? No one else, is that to be recognized, so we can continue on to the agenda. We can jump to Reports, D1, which was added to the agenda earlier tonight, is a recommendation or a report from the Special Labor Attorney regarding the tentative agreement with the DPS/TPOM agreement in the city. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report or any discussion item?
Sure.
All right, is a member of council prepared to state a motion on this subject?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Sir, I move that the council approve the tentative labor agreement between the city of Madison Heights and its union, the TPOAM, unit, as recommended by Labor Council.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, Mr. Sherman.
That's the, that's the TPOAM/DS union that maker of the motion is referring to.
I would so adjust my motion.
Thank you. Is there support of Mr. Corbett's motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Support.
Thank you. Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, made a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the bargaining group, TPOAM/DS, as recommended by the Special Labor Council. Is there discussion for members of council on this item? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Skipping ahead to bid awards or purchases, we have two for discussion tonight. The first one is item F1 from the DPS director, and it's the Community Development Department vehicle number 495. Mrs. Marsh?
Goal A of the adopted 2019 goal plan calls for an enhanced, the city code enforcement program through the addition of a full-time code enforcement officer position, the implementation of evening and weekend code enforcement hours, and the institution of a new policy to penalize frequent offenders and increase the checks on those properties. The goal proposal reflected the necessity and cost of purchasing the relevant equipment for this new position, including a vehicle with a necessary upfitting such as traffic control warning lights and a two-way city radio. Staff and I recommend that city council approve the purchase of one Ford F-150 to be added to the city's vehicle fleet from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, under the Macomb County Competitive Bid, with the options identified for $25,327. In addition to this purchase, equipment and installation of traffic control lighting and a two-way city radio are required for a total purchase cost not to exceed $27,000. Funding is budgeted and available for this purchase.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish to city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council approve the purchase of one Ford F-150, which is being purchased through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program for a unit cost not to exceed, well, with options, it's been identified at $25,327, but the actual purchase cost will not exceed $27,000. The funding is budgeted and available for this purchase.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the purchase of one Ford F-150 from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program, and with options, the price is identified as $25,327. However, this approval will be for a purchase cost not to exceed $27,000. Is there discussion on this item? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item is F2, also from the DPS director, regarding the Huffman Park Backstop Fence and Dugout Replacement. Mrs. Marsh?
The fiscal year 2019 budget includes funding for the replacement of a failing backstop fence at the Huffman Park softball field, a project which was identified in the 2015 to 2019 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The existing fence and dugouts are estimated to date back to the 1970s and are structurally compromised, with evidence of multiple repairs over the years. Staff prepared a request for proposal for removal and replacement of the existing fencing, the broken concrete dugout slabs, and a voluntary alternative canopy over the two dugout areas. Four vendors provided proposals by the deadline. Staff and I recommend that council approve the proposal from Michigan Fence Outlet of New Haven, Michigan, the lowest responsible bidder, for a total project cost of $28,450. Funding is budgeted and available for this purchase. Additionally, staff would note that we will be pursuing a risk avoidance program grant through the city's insurance carrier, the MMRMA, for this project, which could cover as much as one-third of the total project cost if approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish to city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Scott.
I move for council to approve the proposal for a backstop fence and dugout replacement from Michigan Fence Outlet of New Haven, Michigan, the lowest responsible bidder, bidder for a total project cost of $28,450.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the proposal from Michigan Fence Outlet of New Haven, Michigan, who was the lowest responsible bidder for the purchase of park backstop fencing and dugout replacement, for a total project cost of $28,450. Is there any discussion from council?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
Just really quick, these, so these fences are, I mean, they're embarrassing, to say the least, but it is a very high, I mean, a very high number in relation to the amount of money that we actually do put into investments in our parks. It's, you know, it's more than what we had spent on swings, if I can remember correctly. So I'd love to hear a little bit from staff on the prioritization of this, and why now and why this versus some other items with that same money.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. I'd invite Director Mr. Vitale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. There's a couple of things that I'd certainly point to in the report. The fencing dates back to the 1970s, and certainly warrants replacement. I tried to put some photos into the packet for you guys to see, but with the onset of your comments, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, the fences are embarrassing, simply stated. In looking through the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we do have a lot of needs, but in terms of a liability concern, this would be probably one of the most important projects we could do and should do. And also, I'd like to point to something in the memo that I stated about, we have some of our recreation leagues, our joint leagues with Colson and Royal Oak, refusing to play at that field, causing backups at Rosie's Park. So it's an issue in terms of booking and using this field, so I place it at the top of the priority list in terms of projects. Now, swing sets, we were able to, because we saved some funding on the Ambassador Park parking lot project, do about $55,000 in swings, and it certainly warrants that as well. So I put this project kind of at the top of the list in terms of improvements and taking care of some of the city's liability out there.
Mr. Vitale, because it was brought up earlier by Mr. Smith, could you go into how the city prepared the competitive bid package and just the procedure of arriving to this recommended contractor?
Certainly, I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor. So, there's a couple of options for the city when we go out for a bid or for proposal. When the project is not a apples-to-apples process, in this case, we called, we wanted to see what the contractors could bid for the project, so we did a request for proposal. That venue will allow the bidders to come in and say, okay, we've got a fencing project, we generally understand what they want to do here, but we may have something that we can do or propose as part of a proposal package that we would look at and say, wow, that's a great idea, that's not something we thought of. We took that avenue with this option with the fencing, as opposed to doing just a request for bid, which would be eight-gauge fencing, 300 lineal feet of fence, dugout repairs at our specification, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility, it gives the vendors a little bit of flexibility. So, we met with four vendors onsite, we showed them exactly what we were thinking. All four vendors solicited bids for the project, and we, obviously, we go in and we scrutinize those numbers, and we went with the vendor. One thing we also do, too, is we don't necessarily always go with the lowest bidder, because sometimes that can hurt you. In this case, we did reference checks. This company, as a matter of fact, did work for Lanter District, and we got glowing reviews for them, so we're happy to move forward with them.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Is there other discussion for members of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, just more of an observation than a specific comment, whether it's fencing or whether it's swing sets or some of the other projects in our parks, there's no lack of candidates for work. Edison immediately comes to mind when I think of fencing, for example, but this is a more heavily-used park, you have more people coming in and out of it, so the squeakier wheel in this case, but they're all squeaking at the moment, and I think, I think we understand that. Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I have a question for Mr. Vitale. Would there be replacement of the current bleachers that are there, or the seating for the, for the fans?
We have, Your Honor, we have a pretty comprehensive analyzing and replacement program on our bleachers, and even though they're still made of wood, we go through out our parks several times throughout the year, examine the boards that need replacement, are broken, and replace those on a pretty consistent basis. So, to answer your question, no, but those will certainly be looked at when we improve this area. If any boards warrant replacement or painting, we'll handle that as part of the process.
Yeah, I was just noticing, if this is a current picture of Huffman Park, the bleachers there, there doesn't seem to be any help for handicapped individuals or people that are not able to navigate or climb up those bleachers. I just see the railing probably coming from the first couple seats at the top, but nothing on the sides. Do they ever consider that, Joe, when they're planning seating?
Well, Your Honor, to answer your question, yes, we do, and I'd like to point council in the direction of our next Recreation Master Plan, which is actually a fiscal, a goal for this fiscal year. Getting into that a little bit more in terms of, hey, in terms of projects, are we looking at ADA and those types of improvements that we can make in our parks? And Councilwoman Scott, I think, to your point, maybe as part of this project, if there's a way that we can get somebody closer to those bleachers with maybe just a concrete pad, certainly we'll explore that. It's a good idea.
I was thinking about particularly if they want to go up the bleachers. It seemed to be very, I know it would concern me, there's nothing really to hang on, it's just open space in the lower seats. So I was thinking, do they ever put them on one side so that they can be, there can be something to grab on from ground up? Is that ever designed that way?
I believe those options are available.
Okay. I would suggest that the next time we consider bleachers, that that be taken into account.
Good idea. Any other discussion from council?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
Just pointing out, too, that, I guess, I love the comments you made about how this jumps up to the top of the list when you consider liability. That's, I think, important, something we need to view across our park system, in, and in investment that way where somebody couldn't get hurt, you know, taking, I mean, outside of the liability for the city, that's a resident or a guest in our community who could potentially be hurt when we could do something about it. And so I appreciate that, and I do appreciate the difference, so this was a savings from, from what was budgeted, I think by about $7,000, which I'm also very much appreciative of. What I think, I think I'd echo kind of the sentiments of the conversation that's proceeded, I think any time that we replace something, we should do it with, and, like, NDA in mind, so having, having an understanding of those with disabilities and how they would, you know, how they would participate with what we're replacing, I think needs to be a key every time we replace something, every time we retrofit anything, we should do that with, with that in mind. I know Councilman Corbett has been a champion of that for many years now, and I, this is a great opportunity for us to do something, and then just as we replace, we can continue to bring more and more ADA complacency into our park system, and this is a great example, I think, as Councilwoman Scott said, there are those who have disabilities or are handicapped who want to go and enjoy these games and practices. This would be an opportunity for us to do that.
Great, and I'd like to make one more comment, perhaps, and not saying this will happen, we've realized some savings with this project. If we're fortunate enough to secure the MMRMA grant, that will be additional funding that we don't have to spend.
Right.
Maybe we can do something, we weren't looking at the bleachers as part of this project, as more fencing and dugouts, but perhaps we can do something on the tail end if those savings present themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Some folks might not know this, but that field used to be called Varsity, and I think the city made a swap for the old city hall quite a few years ago, and that's how we acquired the Huffman Park property. But that field at one time was the Varsity Field for Massillon High School. They built a new one in '71 behind the school, and they started playing on their own property. But for years, Madison played their football games there and their baseball games. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion from council members? All right, the motion was to approve this proposal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We can go to approval, adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion regarding the special council minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the special council minutes of October 1, 2018, as printed.
Thank you. Is there support? Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Soltis.
Second, please.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion made by Councilman Corbett and Councilman Soltis to approve the special meeting minutes from October 1, 2018? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. What's the wish of council regarding the regular council minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The ones that were in front of us this evening, are these revised, ma'am?
They are revised from the original, but they were updated in the packet as well.
As well, okay.
But they're revised from the original packet.
Packet, okay. Well, then I would, I would move that the council approve the regular meeting minutes of October 8, 2018, as presented this evening.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion made by Councilman Corbett and seconded by Councilwoman Scott to approve the regular city council minutes of 10/8/18, as presented this evening? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. I think we're still deferring on appointments, but are any nominations to boards and commissions from council members this evening? All right, before we adjourn, there's no executive session, so I'd invite any closing comments from members of council and staff, and I'd like to begin, invite Mr. Corbett, any closing comments?
Just two quick items, just a reminder, on Fridays from 1 to 3, I'm up at the library if anybody has any interest of going over any matters related to the city, any complaints, any ideas. And just a reminder, by- And just a reminder, by the next time we meet, the election will have been held, and a very long ballot with no straight-ticket voting, you probably would, if you're eligible, you would probably be well-advised to get an absentee ballot and be able to do it in the convenience of your home. If not, get there early. It could be a long day at the polls, otherwise. I know there are a number of issues of interest to the community, and none the least of which, all three of the propositions that are before the voters this year, don't overlook number two, oh, well, I'm not going to guess which one's which, I think it's the one regarding redistricting, appointing an independent commission that will do that, and then, of course, the marijuana one, which will be of very, of a great deal of interest, I know, to myself, and I suspect the rest of council in determining where we go post-election on that. I'm sure we'll be looking at that again shortly afterwards, so. Vote, that you're right, and a lot of people sacrificed an awful lot to give us that ability. So, and good luck to all the candidates. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor, so yeah, that's a, that's a pretty impactful, impactful week for the city. As Councilman Corbett noted, you know, the election on the sixth is going to make some, I mean, not just the candidates themselves and who's elected, but those ballot initiatives will, you know, make significant changes for our city. And so definitely, definitely go out and vote. The results of that will directly impact us, and by decree, and then others like marijuana will help to, that proposal and the vote on it will help to inform our council on the wishes of our residents in the community before we take any action. And so, please, as Councilman Corbett noted, go vote, make your voice heard. If you can get an absentee ballot, it might be helpful to do so. But the other thing that's happening that week is, as many who've been following along know, we're in an active search for a new city manager, and on Thursday, the eighth of November, so a couple of days after the election, there are going to be workshops with our finalist candidates, as well as an evening reception, to allow the general public to meet and ask questions of the finalists for the city manager position that we have determined as a council. And so I'd invite anybody who has an interest in our city, its future, to be able to come out to that, to make your voice known, and all of that happens prior to our next meeting, on November twelfth. So please take a look, I'm sure we'll post it on social media as well for that reception, but if you're here, or if you're watching us at home, just please remember the eighth of November, that will also have significant impact on our city, maybe not as much, or maybe more than the election on the sixth. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and welcome back, Your Honor.
It's nice to be back, thank you very much. Mr. Geddings?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Soltis, our city clerk and I, we make up the Election Commission, and we had our public accuracy test, and everything went extremely smoothly. I'm sure our city clerk will have additional comments to make about the election coming up on November sixth. I want everybody to know, machinery seems to be functioning quite well, and we're expecting a very large voter turnout, so everyone who wishes their voices to be heard should keep that into, make, consider that in whether they're going to vote absentee or show up at the polls, but everything was functioning great, so kudos to the clerk and Councilman Soltis, and we look forward to the election. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Acting City Manager, Mrs. Marsh, any comments?
No comment tonight.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mrs. Prince, any comments?
Council sort of stole my thunder. All right, the election, of course, is Tuesday, November sixth. All precincts will be open in the city from seven AM to eight PM. Absentee ballots are available in the city clerk's office if you're qualified. We encourage you to come, and if they have an application, we'll be happy to get you a ballot. The last day we can mail you a ballot is the Saturday before the election, two o'clock is the deadline. We do not recommend that, we recommend you coming in earlier than that. Again, there is no straight-ticket party, party on this ballot, so we are estimating it will take between three and five minutes longer to vote this ballot. The ballot samples are on the front page of our website. Please visit that website, check out your precinct, you can print out a sample ballot, figure out how you want to vote, and bring it to the polls. Please be patient with our election workers. They are citizen volunteers, we do pay them, but not very much, it's practically, it's minimum wage, basically, and they're doing their best to make sure that our democracy is run smoothly. They try really hard, and they take it very seriously. If you have any questions about the election, or the process, or any, anything related to the election, please feel free to contact my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Graffstein?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to follow up. I've had a few people ask me about the teal pumpkin project. This is something, I'm not quite sure when it started, my family started doing something where we did non-food items at Halloween, so non, like, we had racers, and notepads, and pencils, and stickers, and that kind of thing, and at some point, over the last few years, the allergy community has come together and come up with this, and there's a whole, there's a website dedicated to it, and there's a map where if you are looking for safe treats for a child who can't have certain foods, you can go on, and there are different houses that have registered, I've registered my house on there, and you can get the actual bucket at like, Target, or a Walmart, or just pretty much anywhere where you would go and pick up your Halloween treats. My house, we do this one, which is no food in this one, no candy, and then we have another bowl, which is nut and gluten-free, but it's not completely allergy-free, and there is no such thing as completely allergy-free, because when they say that, they're just talking, you know, the companies are talking about the top eight allergens, so just, you know, if people are interested, because I've had a few people ask me about it, and this one actually has the information on it, the other pumpkin I have is just the regular pumpkin, that it's the teal color. And this weekend, we took the neighbor's dog to the Halloween event at the animal shelter, which he seemed to enjoy, he didn't like his costumes, so that came off right away, but he seemed to enjoy that, and the kids enjoyed that, and we were able to do some, get some books, a couple of bags of books at the book sale at the library, so that was enjoyable, I hope, it seemed like a lot of people were out at the book sale. And then this weekend is Red Oaks is doing their trick or trees on, I think it's Saturday, maybe it's Sunday, I think it's Saturday, Saturday night, so if you're looking for Halloween events, we definitely have a lot, but again, if anybody has ideas on events they'd like to see the city holding, or they want to help out with, please give us, you know, give us a call, send us an email, let us know, we're always open to suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to remind the citizens that if you are a veteran, or if you wish to honor the veterans, the Active Adult Center, which is on John R., north of Twelve Mile, has an annual program that I go to every year, because they honor the veterans. It's at eleven AM on Wednesday, November seventh, so it's the day after the election, so go home and get a good night's sleep, and then show up at this, because it's very significant. All the people that are there will stand up and talk about their service, and where they were stationed, and it's a wonderful way to honor all our veterans. They also have a free lunch for the veterans afterwards, so that's a nice way to honor them, as well as thank them in person, so I hope to see you there. Again, it's Wednesday, November seventh, at eleven AM, at the Active Adult Center on John R. Also, I wanted to make special recognition about a former, I'm sorry, a current employer who is going, employee who is graduating or retiring, his name is Russell Greve, and he's been a Madison Heights resident, he graduated from Lanter High School, but he is leaving our city from employment after twenty-nine years, and I know he's a hard-working man. My son went to school with his daughter, and they're a wonderful family, but I know he's always been there to help out in the facilities, and he has a lot of knowledge about what he's doing, so I want to thank him for his longtime employment for twenty-nine years. Also, I was very pleased to see on the city website, a sample ballot that I printed out, it is small, so get your glasses on, two pages, but it's a wonderful way, like our city clerk mentioned, if you can go through this, spend your time researching these people, so your vote is going to be meaningful, and check ahead of time, and then take this with you to the polls. They can do that, can't they?
Yes.
And that will save a lot of time for the people standing in line behind you, you won't have to sit there hemming and hawing and trying to make decisions, but it is so important to check out these, these folks that are running. It is a sacrifice on all of their part to give their time and abilities to the government, and I know that they are always appreciated, at least I hope they are. Don't forget that there are three very important proposals, and also, in the Madison District, there is an election in there for six seats, I'm sorry, three, and then two, and also for Oak and County College, so you can research these individuals online and make sure that you make a qualified vote. I went to the roundtable meeting last week, and I started off by saying that the city council now has a policy that if you don't vote in the election, you will not be allowed to speak at the podium. And they all kind of dropped their jaws, and I said, well, isn't that the truth? Why do you not vote, but yet still have the right to speak at the podium? So I think it's really important for you to be there, to study the issues and the candidates, and to cast your vote, no matter how old you are, or how young you are, and I hope to see everybody a wonderful turnout in Madison Heights, so that we can carry on the works of the city the way you want them to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Court, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I just wanted to also mention, Councilwoman Scott mentioned that Lanter was on the ballot, but there's also, all three school districts in the city have school board elections, Lanter, Madison, and we have a small section of Royal Oak as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, two, I'm sorry, Your Honor, two items I sort of neglected. One item came across late today, I noticed the sainted people who work at our animal shelter, and maybe that's what reminded me, they have got new hoodies and T-shirts available as a fundraiser, to continue their work for the animals there, so if you are so inclined and would like to upgrade your wardrobe, they certainly can help you out with that. And I also need to acknowledge that this past Saturday, Nicole and Matt Ball, my granddaughter and her husband, gave birth to their first child, the son, which would be normally, if you count these things, my third great-grandchild, but I personally would not admit that in public. They, among other people, are the, yeah. Well, they're sharp, you can't get nothing by you. But the other thing I was going to mention is Bruce and Donna Ball are also grandparents of them. You may recall them, Bruce worked for the city for a good number of years, so. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank, I was out of the country last week, and I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Bliss for filling in for me. One of the really special things that the state law allows is for mayors and judges to perform weddings, and in my absence, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss performed a wedding or two.
Yeah, two.
Two. It's really special, so pass the word, if you know any lovebirds that want to get hitched quickly, they can, with twenty-four hours' notice, before you let him or her get away, you can run to City Hall, and I or the Mayor Pro Tem will marry, will officiate the wedding. I always say, I'm marrying you, but it's, I'm officiating your wedding. But yeah, please vote. I know members of City Council have personally got to know many of the candidates, especially the candidates for governor, and I believe that the city of Madison Heights has a good relationship with both candidate, both major-party candidates for governor. Both Mr. Schudi and Mrs. Whitmer have visited Madison Heights several times during the campaign, and they know our city and our issues personally, so I'm really excited about that opportunity to have a personal relationship with the next governor of the state of Michigan. But please vote all the way down, it's important that you vote for county and school board as well. So with that, I don't believe there's any other business, so tonight's meeting is adjourned. Good evening.